I found out late this afternoon that I need to recognize Chief Cressing because January 9th is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So we worked it all out to help keep us safe and glad I got a chance to hear that before I got here tonight.
Thank you so much.
We'll get started in our agenda. Our first item is a change order for the mayor's park and I'll let Jessica and I actually talk through this. It's not a huge change order, but I've got one.
Thank you, Mayor. This is just, there was originally some material that was going to be donated for us to create our columns for the design around the park. And once, and all the bidders did the same thing, assuming that it was going to be in our position or ability for us to lay pretty easily with the set install cost. And once they saw what, that material was not going to be in the same format and the same constructability that they had assumed and therefore we were easily used. So this is just a change order to change the material to still real limestone, stone, but something that's already pre-cut and set ready to be installed. So that way, all the labor fees stay the same. It's just the actual change in having the material, purchasing the material for the columns versus having that supplied by the city.
Can I ask a question, Jessica? This material that was supposed to be donated, if they took the same material, but it costs a whole lot more to have it technical in place versus this new veneer they're talking about?
Yes, yes.
It was going to raise the cost of the columns significantly. We didn't know anything, Jessica. They said they would donate, it was actually shot rock that hadn't been cut into layable type stone. We found out later that the stone masons and the brick masons, like columns you see around here, like in front of Spalding Hall in Secondos, they go to the rock quarries and cut that stone themselves. And then the rock quarry charged them so much a ton. This was valued at $5,000 worth of material, wasn't very much material. And now we know why, because it was just raw material, it wasn't cut and ready in size to be laid for those columns. So now we're going to go on the veneer, which is what I say, it would have been a lot more expensive. It was going to add several thousand dollars to the cost as well.
Per column?
Yeah, the columns were going to be $7,000 for the large ones and $4,500 for the small ones. And that's just ridiculous. And so this is going to, it's $10,000 of all material, but the overall cost of the columns is, wouldn't you ever get that figure, it was about $1,000 a column or less?
Right. I think the labor was, the way it was bid was about $700 in labor to install a column versus with this, and I think there's 16 columns total, could be, I'm sure it's in here in the change order on the quantity of columns. But it was definitely going to add a significant cost that again, wasn't anticipated the way it was framed. So the interpretation and the way it was bid is with the, what is being offered, what is being requested to use in LuLa. So that keeps the overall cost of the park, even though it looks like an add-on, it's actually allowing us to put in the columns without an increase in cost, a much larger increase in cost.
We could have several thousands of dollars of more than this if we had to take that raw material and move it and then have it cut to where you could lay it as stone.
Visually, in the way it's constructed, I'm pretty sure that even with these, if we use the shot rock, we're still going to have a concrete block interior and then the materials?
I don't think they were. I don't know. It would have been a different size and I think it would have affected how all of that was done. But again, the cost that we saw to do so was to go ahead and utilize that rock. Again, there was, you had to go all the way to Harrisburg, to the quarry and make those strips and have special equipment that's pre, I think it's called Nisha approved?
IMSHA.
IMSHA, okay.
Like mining.
Yeah, mining, approved equipment. So there was just some additional time and labor to go get the material, whereas the understanding was the material's going to be pre-cut and ready and be able to be delivered to the site. And that's not what was bid by any of the contractors that did the work. There was, it was not real clear to the city, to me, or to our engineering team as we were preparing the bids, what that was going to truly be. So therefore, in trying to find the, again, this is still going to be real limestone. It's just going to be a thinner veneered, veneer meaning real limestone cut thinner and then mortar set around a column that's constructed. I mean, it's still, it's like it's 30 to 36 by 36 footer that those are sitting on. So they're still substantial, the dimensions are still going to match what the overall envision is. And the product is still limestone with a grouted, you know, grouted layering.
And the new color is more what Barshon, Yessen County, the color of the stone that's here, where this shot rock was really gray.
No color variation, yeah.
Yeah, there was no plenty of variation in it. Plus, it's not what we have here. So this is going to, we might have a few more smaller stones than what we would normally have, but if you did it that way, but it's going to look good.
I think it's going to look great.
It's going to be attractive.
Yeah, I'm going to go with them on a possible change order on some of the fencing that might save us $8,000. So that will help offset this $10,000, $10,600.
Correct.
There you go.
$10,350.
$10,350, I'm sorry. Anyone else have any other questions with Jessica on the reason for this change order? If not, I would ask for motion to entertain, approve the change order submitted by Hare Construction for this stone material.
Let the motion, Mayor.
Motion for Councilman Duttman, is there a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second, Councilman Duns, any other discussion? All in favor, City 55 saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Your motion's carried. Okay, is Jessica, you want to head up transition lane as well?
Yes. This project is essentially substantially complete and in service. It is online, been tested. And this is just a balancing change order at the end of the project to do, make sure all quantities match up from what was installed versus paid out to finish out and do the final pay estimate. And then this instance, I know this doesn't happen very often, but our installed quantities were slightly less than what our estimated engineering quantities were, which led to a $15,420 credit just due to not installing those quantities. So they got paid for everything that they installed per unit quantity price, but the overall contract price ended up being reduced by this amount.
And this is the 12-inch line going from the tank to the head of your site?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I've got a change order that was a reduction of $15,420 on that project. Anybody want to argue with that?
Don't make that motion, Mayor.
I'll say.
Second, is there any other discussion?
That's the same as the bottom of the table.
All in favor, City 55 saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Jessica. And then we've got a sewer service request on Springfield Road and Parkway Drive.
Yes, in your pocket, there is a standard sewer request. There's a property that fronts Springfield Road and the, which is very corner of Leslie Valley Road, that borders and backs up to lots that front Parkway Drive. And there's a small section, it's a little over 200 feet, of sewer that needs to be extended to be able to provide the property back there a sewer. And this is just a request that upon its completion, that we would agree to take, A, that we conserve it and that we would agree to take that system over into our system upon its final completion and construction.
Jessica, who is CIV, CIV AO?
It is Dr. Franklin Dela Cruz and Maria.
Maria. Those are what?
Yeah, those two in white, yes.
And that tract here, it's right past Five Star, many times fitness and.
Sits back in behind.
It actually comes back from ties into Parkway Drive, so it's a pretty big tract.
Correct.
It needs sewer service for him to develop.
And to, or sell off a little small portion of it, it has to extend to create, to say that it has service, so.
Right. So if anybody has any other questions with Jessica, this is kind of standard request that meets our specification.
And it's already in the city limits, so no annexation agreement is needed.
I ask for motion to approve the request for the, this service to be taken in by our department.
So move, Mayor.
Motion for Councilwoman Hart, is there a second?
I'll say.
Councilwoman Shekels, any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor, City 55 saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I think we might want to do the HRB COA recommendation before we get into the guidelines. So, and I know Councilwoman Hart, you've got her queues along the line, right?
Yes, sir.
Better to say.
And then getting those numbers?
Mine is the first one, 23-76.
And then Joe?
Next, the third one. The tree.
He was the applicant.
I can't pull it up right now.
Oh, I see what they, yeah, okay. All right, they just got the queues.
Sure. Well, you need to read them first, Mayor, and then you step out and we take up the vote. But there was only three. COA 2376, Jason James, applicant, and I request approval to renovate the storefront at 110 West Stephen Foster. Recommendation, Park A, approval of the second-story balcony and new windows, window slash trim slash door, denial of the proposed vertical wood siding. COA 2377, Rachel Miller, applicant, owner, install rooftop HVAC without screening at 104 North Fourth Street. Recommendation, owner has stated they will paint units the same color as the building. Approval of the painting. COA 2379, Joe Buckman, applicant, OP owner, request approval to remove and replace dying tree in front of 214 West Broadway. Recommendation, approval of the tree removal and replacement.
And thank you. Any leave?
I don't know if there's any discussion, if there's any discussion about the two that they're recusing on, then they should leave for the discussion. So I don't know if anyone has discussion on 2377, that they want to take up before anybody steps out.
COA 2376, that's the one to you, Betty. If there's no discussion, then they can just recuse on the vote.
Wait, I don't know, she, do you intend to recuse her? Like, I think Councilman Duttman should recuse or go all the way out on 79. I don't know if he wants to recuse or abstain.
If I'm abstaining, then I vote, it goes with the majority.
Correct.
He's a client, I'm selling that property, so I'm not sure which.
When, I'm not really, I mean, you, I guess not, I don't know that you have to do either, you know, I mean, it's up to you, but, you know, I mean, if you want to.
You didn't pay him. I'd say your deal's done with him.
I'm just hoping I have.
It's not like that's what they're doing, that transaction.
Okay. But maybe if you feel more comfortable extending, then you don't have to leave. I'll just abstain.
Okay, well then.
Could you take them individually, Mayor, just for clarity of record?
Okay, we take COA 23-76, we have that with the, with the addition?
There's no addition, just the recognition part was in there, I guess.
So I need a motion to approve COA 23-76.
So move with the recommendation.
All right, Councilwoman Williams, we have a second?
I'll say it there.
All right, Councilwoman Shekels, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? My motion's carried. And next one is COA 23-77, I need a motion to approve the recommendation by the storefront board.
So move, Mayor.
With that recommendation.
With recommendation.
All right, this is Councilman Hibbs, is there a second?
I'll say it there.
Second, by Councilwoman Hart. Any other discussion? Seeing none, then all in favor, City 55 saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then Joe, all in favor.
We won't make a vote.
The director, so the councilor, who's recusing on COA 23-79 with the recommendation, we need a motion to approve that recommendation by the HRB board.
So move, Mayor, with the recommendation.
All right, we have motion for Councilman Duns, is there a second?
Second.
Second, for Councilwoman Hart. Any further discussion? All in favor, the City 55 saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? My motion's carried. Okay, next item on our agenda is going to review and test the vote on some HRB design guidelines, changes that we've been working on, I guess now for like three, four, five years, I think. Some witnesses, I was Jan Johnson, our planning, his own commission, and Cam Skinner, who was our preservation administrator. We've gotten a very large packet of information that's presented to us last week and Cam gave us an overview of this, to review all the different sections and so forth. So we wanted to be all in this, kind of give us an overview on why we went about making the changes and hiring consultants that worked on this business.
Yes, my name is Cam Skinner, preservation administrator. So this project started about two, two and a half years ago, and it came from issues with the guidelines, we've had conflicts throughout the years, and they just haven't been completely rehauled probably since the early 2000s. So we wanted to update, add things. Preservation has changed, views have changed, so we wanted to bring the community's thoughts in into the guidelines because that's really who they're about. It's a living document. The biggest changes, I would say, formatting. We've adopted a whole new structure. We have added more concise language, so we've beefed up the document. That way, there is more clarification and we don't have all these interpretive guidelines where one person might think one thing and one person might think the other. Along with that, we've also added some regulatory language in it. In your packet, you will see it has shall, should, and may. This is really, I think, clarified what needs to be strictly done and what doesn't, or may be possible to have some leniency towards. Beyond that, we have updated all photography, we have updated the period of significance for the district as a whole. Before, we went to 1930, that's what we went up to. Beyond that, we kind of just decided wasn't historic or worth the quality anymore. Well, that has changed. We're seeing a lot of houses and other structures coming on the national register that are anywhere from the 1940s all the way up to 1975, 1976. So we wanted to make sure that we include those properties because we do have some in the district in the guidelines as well, so we've added that. And that will also be updated through the national register once we start resurveying properties in the district with the new COA grant for this year. So it all kind of works in tandem. Beyond that, we've also added introduction sections to each guideline section. That way, it just kind of gives a brief history or overview of what's common or seen in the district, or what has previously been practiced. Next is the, we added a whole, one whole new section, which is Section 11, that is all about green infrastructure, sustainability, all those kinds of things, which is more of a new practice, which is why it got added. I can't say we've seen a lot of this in the district, but I definitely think it will be something that we will see in the future as we move to more sustainable power opportunities and things like that. Next is everyone's favorite, which is windows. We've had lots of issues with windows in the past, so we've really just broke it down that way into multiple sections. That way, it clarifies between historic windows, non-historic windows, wood windows, metal windows, vinyl windows. That way, there's no confusion on what is allowed and not allowed. And with that, we have added, one of the key guidelines is about replacing historic windows, so now we've added that a window must be, have deteriorated 60% as a whole before it can be replaced. So if it's, if it's not to that point yet, we're going to recommend and encourage that you preserve and restore what's there and use in-kind repairs and that sort of thing. We've also changed it where we focus more on the primary street visible facade, and we're having some leniency for non-street visible facades and ones that are in alleyways because alleys aren't public way. We're not concerned with things that you can't see from the front view, from the front elevation. So with that, we've added capabilities to, you know, have windows that are maybe aluminum clad or vinyl clad, but not a vinyl window or fiberglass window, but those are possible now. Whereas the floor, it was seen as a no-no, don't do it all. So I think that really helps with applicants in funding these projects and that kind of thing.
And that was one of the, that got a lot of discretion in the meetings. I think to your point, we're going to be, going to be clarifying this interpretation because over the years, as people in your position have changed, they would have done stuff one way and then the next director would go another way. We wanted to get away from that and not make it so rigid.
Right.
Like these windows, whereas before, you know, it was, you know, we just almost never wanted them to replace. And now we're giving the opportunity, if you've got, I'm just going to paraphrase this, if they got a bad window on the front that is need a major repair, whatever, they can use a window from the rear, move it to the front and put a light kind new window in the rear, which before we never allowed that. That's going to save a lot of people a lot of money going forward in a lot of these repairs. And there's other sections just like this where if it's on the side side, we want to kind of be more traditional, but if it's, you know, a rear window, we would treat that the same way because it's not visible for the streets and so forth.
Yes.
And aluminum plating and all that sort of changes will be very helpful in this section.
Next, we, more topics that have just kind of come up in the past few years that I just wanted to make sure you all realized. We've talked about painting masonry before, so we do have that in here. The, you know, we don't encourage anyone to paint a building that has not been painted unless there are, you know, four or five brick or masonry types on the same building, there's, you know, bad repairs that have been done through the years. That's really the only case that we want to allow those things. And I think that's what we've come to as a community that we gather. So I think that'll be good. Now, moving forward, there is internally illuminated signs, which has also been brought up before. Previously, and I think this is just kind of, you know, throughout the years, you adopt it and it just kind of hangs on and hangs on. You don't want the whole district to have illuminated signs, but there are specific circumstances where it might be appropriate for a certain building. And so we felt that we wanted to, oh, have that as an allowable, as a possibility. So it's not saying that it's guaranteed, but it's saying that, yes, this could happen. Whereas before, it was saying, no, we're not going to do this ever at all. So I think that's really going to help people as they move in, they're, you know, they're going to, they're going to see that we're trying for them, you know, we're all community based and that's what it's about. We want to keep the community intact as it is and not lose that historical value.
So we say that internally lit sign, may.
May, if it's been determined that it is appropriate for that structure, for property.
So you're going to get into interpretation there again?
There's always something, so there's always some interpretation.
It's a state, right.
But, you know, where I think it's very helpful is, for example, I don't remember exactly, I should, I wrote a corporate field group on it, but it used to say, retain historic windows, period. You know, repair when possible. It didn't say, you shall or you may. And so I think, just having reviewed it as an attorney and writing, you know, thinking about litigation, of course, I think it gives a lot more clarity to where there is discretion and where there's not discretion. And there's always some discretion, right, when you're looking at a lot of things, but I think that the may doesn't mean they have to, right? But when they, you know, and so that's where the staff recommendation, I think, is very helpful, where he can say, well, historically, you know, I don't know, a barber shop, I'm making it up, is this true? I don't know, would have a lit up hole, right, you know, or something like that. This, this building would have had something like that, that might be appropriate, whereas, I don't know, Talbot Tavern would have never had an internally, I don't know, I'm probably wrong.
That's right.
You know, Talbot Tavern would never have had an internally lit sign for a building built in the 1700s versus a laundromat built in the 50s or, you know.
Or ice and produce.
Yeah, ice and produce.
Built to the time that.
You know, something built in that certain time period, I don't know what else is built in the 60s, right? You know, settled that building, maybe, you know, might have a lit up sign, that kind of stuff. So it gives them the discretion to look at those facts versus, you know, they, you know, you shall not paint, I don't know if it says shall, shall not paint, you know, historic masonry unless X, Y, and Z, that kind of stuff, so.
Well, I think by adding this shall, should, or may will save you a lot of headaches in the future.
Yes.
And law retakes, a lot of lawsuits and everything else that goes along with that. Because it allows the, this, the director to have a little more discretion.
Correct.
But I think it'll be, those three words will probably save you a whole lot of headaches and save us a lot of headaches.
Well, I don't want to be a term, Mayor, but I think it'll make the board feel much more comfortable when they are exercising their discretion, that they're doing it appropriately in the circumstances where they're supposed to, versus where it's a little less clear.
And then, there's not much left. One of the big things is our glossary appendix. We kind of beefed that up and made sure that we were clarifying key terms that have caused confusion in the past. You know, street visible is one that people are always like, well, what does that mean? So we clarified that kind of thing, as well as mothballing, contributing resources, non-contributing resources, in-kind repair replacement. Make sure that was in there because I started reinforcing in-kind replacement as that was kind of dropped off by previous administration. So to add that, to make it clearer. And then, in the appendix, we've also added ordinances, we've added historic maps, historic district maps, building maintenance checklist, the actual COA application, and then the Kentucky That really is the, those are the key points of everything we changed. I mean, it really is basically a whole new document. Its entirety has been changed. So there are one or two sections that are not in there, and that is economic hardship and conditionally use. Now, they're in there under Article 15 and they're mentioned as a blur, but they don't have a full. but they don't have a full-blown condensed section on them. And those, we will be working on, and we're just going to have to pass those out later today.
Dan, you got anything you'd like to add as kind of an overview of this process?
No, I, I think Cam has done a great job in the committee putting it together. It's been a lot of hard work to get it done. The key will also be that you'll need to get Article fifteen amended. It's in desperate need of amendment. That's part of zoning regulations and it's just, it just needs to be updated. That, that will be the next, the next thing that needs to be done.
Cam, I got a couple of questions on what you were talking about, lighting, I spent some time creating a lot of this stuff. There's one section, the lighting for signs, where it says light fixtures, light fixtures associated with signs shall not be readily visible from street or sidewalk. What is, it's ninety, nine, four, three, eight, A. I don't, I didn't quite understand how that could, how that could.
There you go.
It would be page one forty-two. I didn't understand how that could.
I thought it was sort of, I mean, I don't want to keep, I sort of understood it to mean that like the light bulb that's lighting it from the inside was covered by the sign.
Yeah.
For example, the bullets, Bistro sign that was modified, had light bulbs sticking out all around.
Talking about how much light filters off of a property is what that's discussing, rather than the actual fixture itself. So how much lighting is leaking from one property onto the other? And is it impacting their view and that kind of thing? Because we don't want harsh lighting going out to the roads and that kind of thing.
This is like a light fixture, so I'm trying to figure out that, to me is like part of the, you know, a lot of, a lot of the signs have lights shining on them externally, not internally. I'm, I'm thinking that's might be what you were referring to, part of hiding the fixture because it's going to be external from the sign. Or maybe you're referring, they're disforming it internally there.
We can just clarify that it's the light filtering.
I'm sorry.
So we can clarify in that guideline that it's talking about the light leaking on the other property.
Is it referring to the indoor light fixtures?
It's, it's referring to any light fixture. So it's referring to any sign with a light that shines on.
And we do the same with commercial design establishments ordinance. We have, actually, we have a foot, a maximum foot handle that you can't exceed for light intensity at the property line.
That's kind of like apartment above a store now. If, you know, if you want to have floodlights, completely lights that building, it's.
Right, right.
Just for aesthetics to look.
Something or one thing you often retain, it's another thing, so.
Yeah, we can clarify that.
Yeah, we'll clarify.
And then there was several references, you know, you got, I guess the non-historic residences that are in the district, I would assume that those are like less than fifty-year-old residences.
Yeah, so the new construction.
So a lot of them, I guess the reference was, many of them were dealt with aluminum windows and brick types of small windows that are, you wouldn't treat that the same way as you would a house that had blue windows and all that. That's what happened there.
Yep, exactly.
Anyone else had any other questions or, you know, how we're taking this up for approval tonight?
Question, someone that already has non-historic on it. Okay, and let's say it becomes in disrepair. Can they replace that or would this be prohibited now?
Same with wanting to replace that.
Okay.
You know, I, just, just a comment, I, I think some of our biggest issues on HRB this year have been the internally lit signs, obviously windows. And just clarity real quick, when you say the front elevation, does that mean standing in front of that building, directly looking at it? So if you're standing off to the side and you can see a side window, that does not count as looking?
It does. I count anything I can see walking past that building, anything I can see is included. So like, for instance, the barber shop on Third Street. They came to me and they wanted, they need to, they wanted to replace the windows. So there are maybe two visible windows on the side. We asked them to keep with in-kind and replace them with wood. And then we gave them the option that the ones that are further behind that, that you can't see, you can replace with vinyl or aluminum clad.
So if you have a, a house that's got a really wide lot, and then if you walk, you can see every, every one of the windows.
Yep, that's true.
You can't say the rear facade, though.
Right, yeah, right. Yeah, it's all day, it's based on that property and it's like, correct.
And I'm not exactly sure when that interpretation got changed several years ago because we even had a case on, a lawsuit on Pershier, East Pershier. And we mediated that case where it was only what you could see from the street front. And that was at that point, I thought we had eliminated the ones in the back, but at some point that interpretation changed. But once we had that case on East Pershier, where they had replaced all the windows without a COA, and we went to court and we mediated it and we came to the conclusion that all, all we really were concerned about were the ones that were street visible. And so they had to do the side and the front, the ones that we could actually see and everything else in the back. So I, I'm not sure that's kind of clarifying, you know, this is making it the next administrator, the next administrator will have one set of rules to go on.
Residents, that, that's more relevant to residents, as I said, the commercial don't have the side windows and stuff. And the, and the wood, you know, wood siding is always, also a major discussion point and heartburn to some people. Where now, if you got a house that needs, you know, all new wood siding, you know, you're just the front, it's visible size, you get it. The rear can have, I already know where it has saved a ton of money on that whole rear facade. Generally, that's a house, so you can put that on as long as it's same size.
Correct.
And looks the same, which a lot of it does, so that's a, that's a nice change there. And that's why houses in the district.
And then the other thing, another thing was the painting exterior brick. So we, we addressed that, that, it's all come up this year. And then these rooftop HVAC things, it's been, been clarified and, and once again.
Right.
And it's all for the tap community to look nice, there's no question about it. But it's nice that it's in here now and if somebody's going to do the property, at least they know the rules. They don't want, you know, do not mount a property, whatever.
We just hope they read them.
Yeah. I'll just start throwing them out in the, in the road and help people pick them up.
Application process get some change, they have to worry a little bit.
Application process is the same, basically. I mean, it's always, the process has been pretty good. It's been the supplemental information and resources that we use that's kind of been needed to be fixed.
Didn't you kind of start, I don't think it's required, but instead of doing more of the app, the meeting with the applicant, the pre-application.
Yeah, so.
I think it's helped them.
Yeah, we have changed that and the fact that I want to have everything with the application discussed before the meeting. That way, we're not sitting in the HRB meeting and going through the application page by page and trying to figure out what this means and that means. So I don't pass those on to the board unless I have them complete at that level.
I've heard some compliments of the three-hour meetings and now one-hour meetings. And that's been a major improvement since you've been in, couldn't play scans on.
Yes, I'm trying. I don't want to be here that long either, so.
You have to give your work on that.
Thank you.
I think that pre-meeting is, I'm very happy with that.
I think that's where a lot, a lot of arguments or some of the tempers flare a little bit too. If you get in a meeting like that.
Right.
And then you get to argue at the meeting instead of paring this out previously. It's worked out a lot better, thank you, that has.
I think it's also just helpful for the record to be clear about what they're requesting. Sometimes I think they come in there and they're not sure, and then the board can't be prepared to review it and everybody's frustrated, so.
Correct.
Anybody's horn?
It's not mine. I'd like to say as well, Mayor, if I can, I think you've done a fantastic job on the descriptions, the clarity of, of the, and the detail. I mean, it's something that we absolutely needed for a long time. So congratulations and thank you for the job that you all done. I've got a couple of questions, not much. One of them being the use of the term in-kind, and that's used throughout, you know, the manual or the guidelines. In-kind to me means a service or goods offered in lieu of, instead of money. I think that terminology may be incorrect.
I think Chief was going to check that.
I think that it should be like materials or, or same materials instead of in-kind. I, I, I'm just concerned that in-kind may open up that for interpretation.
In-kind is, is a preservation term used everywhere. Let's see what the definition is.
It's, I have it, it's consisting of something in goods or services other than money.
Well, the definition of guidelines.
That's the actual definition in Webster's.
Oh, let's see what the definition is.
And that's what it means to me, so.
In-kind repairs and replacement, also known as matching repairs or replacement. This refers to the process of repairing or replacing a part of a building. For example, window buttons with the same material type designed, dimension, texture, detailing, and exterior appearance.
But that's a term, that's a definition.
That's a standard preservation.
Right, correct. But in legal terms or in definition, that's not what that means.
Well, I think we add on in-kind repairs and replacements, so the same.
But when I Google it, it says paying or returning something of the same kind as that receiver offered.
But that's goods or services in lieu of money.
But I think if you're defining it in the glossary and then we're saying, here's your guideline.
That's what I was going to say, if you're defining it in your glossary, that's.
Then I think that covers us as far as clarity for an applicant, right? It sounds like it's kind of a term of art, so to speak, in the preservation world.
Right, right.
Okay, okay.
I, I wouldn't necessarily use it that way, I'd do the same thing, but you know, if that's how they're defining it, I think it would, I think that would cover that, even if there's confusion on the street term or however you or I would use it.
Okay, that's, that's, and that's all my concern was, is that it would be misconstrued and, you know, be open for interpretation. I feel like, admittedly, I've only gotten through one hundred and seventy-eight pages of the two hundred and eight. And that's, that's my fault, but it's very clear, it's very concise. I'm, I'm completely happy with, you know, with how it's organized. It looks fantastic. I think it's going to solve and prevent a lot of future issues. I, for one, am not really comfortable with passing, you know, without having a little bit more time to cover the material. That's just my opinion. I would, I would prefer to have a little bit more time just to look at the, the legal part of it at the end, I'd like to read through and understand a little bit, a little bit more. But, Mayor, and that's just my opinion. I mean, if, if the council doesn't agree, I'm, I would most likely go along with them, but I would like to request or request, or make a motion to table it, at least until the two-week going forward, to give a little bit more time to review it on my end.
I was going to ask if there's a time-sensitive thing to this, the current application and so forth.
It is time-sensitive. And it's also, this is part, part of the CLT project from our grants. So this was partially done with grant money, so the sooner the better.
Well, and let me clarify, the council is not actually required to pass it under Article fifteen. It's the, HRB, it's their role, it's they get final action on the design guidelines.
But you're asking us to approve it.
We submitted it to you. Well, there are, you know, you all take final action on your, on the COA, so it'd be nice that everybody's on the same page and that you all are comfortable with them. And, and so, yeah, tabling it until you're comfortable with them. But I think that's what we wanted to present it to you all as the council because you all will be using these as well. It would be nice to have your support.
Yeah, sure. With the guidelines, as they're set forth, are followed by the, the board. But if there's a discrepancy, of course, it comes to us.
Correct.
So I would feel more comfortable with a little bit more time to review, but if it's something that's time-sensitive, you know, I understand. But I would think that a couple of weeks would make a difference.
When's your next meeting?
That's what I'm asking.
Next week.
Next Tuesday. We can't.
But you've already, you've already. Okay, that's my question, is are your, those are your assessments?
Those are important, I see.
And there's nothing that's coming up that would be under sort of the induced study?
Okay.
And I think, has, has any of these, has this been publicized, did any? I, I missed plenty of stuff, but I live in the historic district. I didn't know there was being a big review going on about the regulations stuff. I, I'm with Mr. Dunham, so I, I think it's, the signage thing has got me a little bit just sitting there with a spectator, a little bit concerned. Couple of weeks would make any difference. It's sounding kind of, kind of fast. And I think I'll publicize to people that this is all being reviewed, so people in the historic district know about it.
There was a public hearing, yeah, the historic review board had a public hearing and it was published in the Standard.
Okay, well, that's, I don't see a name of standards, so I get that. I, I just know a lot of people don't know that. Joe and Betty served on the committee that was consulted. They've, they've been involved with it for over two years. I attended some of these, not everyone, some, some of us here that haven't, David hasn't had that same chance to sit in on the discussion that went in while we picked some of these topics, like windows and lights and so forth. We felt like the ones that were in attention. But I, I would have a problem with waiting another two weeks to, that you all finished looking at it. Do you have any other questions? Cam can be here and answer them. I think you aren't that. We need to vote on it, haven't we?
After you can even make a motion, you just kind of made, you said you were going to make a motion.
I will make a formal motion to table it.
We're going to vote by the council on the historic review board design guidelines update until the next week. And a motion by Council knows, as they said.
I'll say it again.
Say it with the head, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And a close. Let's just carry.
I will say this is the first time I sit down and think, I haven't had a review this. So I did.
Did you ever read that?
I've read that.
Definitely.
I've never read that one, but, but when I started looking through this, I didn't get into that lawsuit, so.
I'll tell you, this is where we started, back in the day. These, these were the guidelines. I think it's great.
Pictures that you got showing what is acceptable and what's not acceptable, that's a huge help.
Yes, and we purposely took pictures from Louisville. That way, nobody had their feelings hurt, so it's a house, they call it.
All the no-no's from Louisville.
Yes.
All the positive ones are here.
You know, looking through there and I bet some, you all probably felt like you seemed, you didn't realize that we have all these homes and all these buildings, you don't realize, you see them as a group, but you don't realize, and you start pointing them out, how many we have. And it's pretty remarkable, the, the different styles and things that we have, it's pretty, pretty cool.
And that's where your design guidelines are so thick here. Unlike other cities, they do numerous districts. So when I was in Bowling Green, we had, we had a downtown historic district, and then you would break it up into historic districts for neighborhoods. And then you would do guidelines just for those different districts. I mean, we're so eclectic and so large as a district that, that's why it takes so much to cover them. And, you know, that's one, folks bring up, why don't you have paint colors? Well, I mean, we've, we've ranged from seventeen hundreds to nineteen seventies, nineteen eighties. There's just no way that you can cover every style, every year that something's built. So we're very unique in having one large district like we do.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
About, and it has to do with roof pack of materials, it's on page one of seven. There had been one instance, I know, with Ms. Forman's over here. I couldn't really ascertain or extrapolate from this that we covered that issue. And it was, it had to do with a, with a roof cup with a color, like.
It was a faux finish.
It was a faux.
Was it the one that we let stay for a year, and it was to see if it would change colors?
Yeah.
It probably changed colors, but.
Well, I mean, I'm sure it's fine, but I don't think we covered that.
She went to roof farms where she.
Right.
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 And it was a cost her major money to change it, but it was a, but it was a faux color. So it was, it was a, it was a aged copper, but it was a faux color, so I didn't notice anything in here that covered that. We do not call out color of roofs as very specific. I mean, if people feel that that needs to be a thing, we could look into adding that, if that's not a common practice. Well, your language more or less says, re-roof of materials that match the historic materials in dimensions, profile, texture, color, and composition. So you're wanting to match a historic, but we're looking at a faux color. So if somebody wanted to put an aged copper of color roof on, I mean, does that match a historic? I mean, it just depends. Okay, okay.
It would depend on the style, the, you know, the date that it was constructed, and I mean, it's possible, but, you know, it's a replacement, not the type material, too.
Okay, so it's still left up to interpretation and.
We could, we could look at, we could, we'll go through, and he's not familiar with that, that application, so we'll look at it and see what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
I know, we'll get discussed about that roof, but that color that's on there, that copper does age to that color in different areas than Barstown, Kentucky. It's so different, ages are so much different. No, but a lot of that copper turns that green color in other cities, but in Barstown, it doesn't go that patina'd look like that.
Well, not, not that I had any problem with it, I just, I knew it was a point of contention, and it was, and it came to appeal, and it came to an attorney coming up here, and, you know, I, I didn't see it was really addressed in here.
Well, the bigger issue is, is that without a COA, which makes it even, it makes it more complicated to have to try to fix it once somebody's already put it on.
HRB had denied it and then wanted it removed, so I guess that's why it came up.
What'd you say? I'd do the same for you, sir.
Move on then to the minutes of the council, if you want to change the fact that we approved anybody unanimous consent. Want to ask Andre Hayton, our city attorney, to read the first reading, first we get to introduce our Code of Ethics, the two thousand twenty-four dash zero one. Need to introduce that and then have a first read, and Andre, can you kind of give some background on how this came to us, really requested by the fiscal court, the judge?
Do you want to introduce it first, Mayor?
I think somebody introduced it.
Mayor, I may be wrong, I'd like to introduce some, it's the twenty twenty-four dash zero one, chapter forty-three Code of Ethics, and I ask our city attorney to read it somewhere.
Thank you, so just kind of briefly, Deputy Judge Metcalf had reached out. We've had a joint city-county ethics commission for, I'm not sure how long they are, several decades, since the nineties, I would say, and it was, it's current, the current makeup is two. Well, I was gonna say, it's currently the city of Barstown, the fiscal court, the county, and then the city of Fairfield, any cities in the county could join, but for whatever reason, Fairfield.
New Haven and Bluefield might have accepted us for years.
And so the makeup of the board currently is that the city has two appointees, the county has two appointees, and the city of Fairfield has one appointee. And so the city of Bluefield and New Haven were authorized to have their own ethics commissions, but I don't know if it was difficulties finding members, or, you know, it's not a board that meets terribly often unless there's a complaint before them, but they have requested to join the existing joint city-county board, so then all incorporated cities in the, in the county, plus the, the county, would all be members at that point. So that's, the, the primary change is that Bluefield and New Haven are joining, and then sort of to reflect the new makeup, the city will have three appointees instead of two, the county will have three appointees instead of two, and then each of the smaller cities will have one appointee, so there'll be nine, is that right?
Three, three, and twos.
Three, three? Three, three, three. Three, three, three is nine, yeah, okay, I was like, wait a minute, so there'll be nine total, as opposed to there were five previously.
I can't remember the last time they met, but it's been a long time, but it's required to have that in place.
There's a state ordinance that, that requires everyone to have an ethics, to be able to hear these kind of complaints, so I think, you know, I, I don't want to speak for the smaller cities, it's maybe just I think it's easier to be in the larger commission oversight, so. So I've got a summary.
Read it so big, please.
Summary of ordinance B two thousand twenty-two of the, chapter forty-three Code of Ethics. An ordinance relating to the establishment, regulation, and administration of a joint single code of ethical conduct applicable to elected and appointed officials and certain employees and agencies of the city of Barstown, cities of Barstown, Bluefield, Fairfield, New Haven, and the county of Nelson in the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Whereas the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Kentucky has enacted legislation requiring the city to enact and enforce the Code of Ethics governing the conduct of city officers and employees, and whereas the city are committed to the operation of a city-county government that manifests the highest moral and ethical standards among its officers and employees, and desire to comply with all requirements of the Commonwealth's local government ethics law, and whereas the cities of Bluefield and New Haven desire to comply with all the requirements of the Joint Code of Ethical Conduct. Now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Barstown that, number one, the city of Bluefield and the city of New Haven will be added to and bound by the Joint Code of Ethical Conduct. Number two, the number of members on the Joint Board of Ethics will be amended from five to nine, giving one appointment each to the cities of Fairfield, Bluefield, and three appointments each to the city of Barstown and the fiscal court of Nelson County. Three, regulations for vacant positions, the funding mechanism, and the referral procedure for.
It's the first reading, so we might take a half, and I would pick this up again at the next meeting. And then, next report. Chief Todd asked if he'd like to give us kind of a hearing review on the fire department's activities, so chief.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. So in two thousand twenty-three, we had eighteen hundred calls for service, which was a seven percent increase over two thousand twenty-two, majority of that being, false alarms was a forty-four, additional calls over the previous year, and then we had over an additional hundred EMS calls. EMS calls makes up about sixty-five percent of our call volume. We gave twenty-three mutual aid calls, and those ranged from structured fires to water rescues to search and rescue out in the county, and we received mutual aid one time. I think this is a very important number of employee turnover, you know, from twenty-one until, and in twenty-two, we had about a fifty percent turnover rate for our department, because we only employed twenty at the time. That, you know, costs a lot, the city a lot of money, and it puts a lot of operational stress on the department as we're trying to create a consistent service, because it takes generally about three to four years for a firefighter to develop and become, you know, time to get their firefighter EMT, and start to get into technical disciplines. It takes, it takes them a while to get there, so, you know, the city's done a great job of helping us retain those employees by making some salary adjustments and vacation adjustments, so that, that's really helped in retention, and, you know, it's up to our, the chief officers and stuff to make sure that we're providing a good work environment for the staff so that we can retain them. So last year, we only lost two people, so that, that's really good, and you'll see that in the next section, you know, with that turnover, in two thousand twenty-two, we had almost three thousand hours of training hours, and then in twenty-three, we almost, we more than doubled that to sixty-five hundred, and that's just trying to bring our personnel up to, because we had that such a high turnover rate, that we had to really increase our training hours to bring them up to where we need them to be, getting our staff trained up in confined space rescue, something we hadn't done in four or five years, and plus we had so much new staff, so, you know, that's used quite a bit, and the distillery industry, public works are always going down into the sewers and things like that, so the potential was there for those types of rescues, getting all of our driver operators up to national certifications, that helps with our ISO ratings, but also makes them more efficient as well. So a lot of training hours, we got two captains that are gonna be retiring out in the next two years, and that's forty-five years of experience we're gonna be losing, so, you know, we're stressed about, you know, getting those, our other staff brought up to officer level, so we can, when they retire, we'll bring them up to standards. All of our other numbers you see there, you know, we do a lot as far as building inspections and hydro testing, we do smoke detector installs, a lot of public education with school kids, you know, we do, try to do a lot with fire prevention, try to keep the fire from occurring in the first place, and, you know, making sure that we don't lose lives within the community. A lot of, we go out to a lot of the industries and provide fire extinguisher training, and we do a lot of our own vehicle and building maintenance, you know, and that helps save the city thousands of dollars by some of our staff doing that stuff, because, you know, working on a fire apparatus is about a hundred and some odd dollars an hour, and we, we tend to bring in a couple of guys that are certified to work on those on overtime, so it saves a lot of, a lot of money on that side. But overall, great year, not hardly any injuries, we had some close calls, but good, safe year for the staff.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone have any questions, Chief, on this report?
One quickly, Todd, when is our next ISO audit?
It should be this year or next year.
Is that like every four years or something?
I think they changed it to five to seven, so we should be coming up on it. Yes, Mayor.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay. Might come back to you a little bit later here. We have Todd Johnson's term on development review board is expiring this month, and he's decided he doesn't want to run, he's serving another term, so he's retiring from that, so this is a joint appointment with the city and county, so I've talked to Judge Hush and J.D. Riggs, who does commercial and house design, is of course a raised construction business, he's agreed to serve, taking over Todd's, he had a new three-year term, and the judge said he was finding us appointing J.D., and he will take it up at their next meeting, so we'd like to appoint J.D. Riggs to the development review board. Anybody else got any questions? Most of you should know J.D., he certainly knows construction has a qualification for that board, and they do have to lead. Get a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, if I'm being ordered to. Boy, J.D. Riggs is a development review board. I'll second.
Motion of Councilman Shekels and the second, the Councilman Williams, any other discussions? All the factors, they're saying aye, aye, anybody opposed? Fiscal court, take it up at their next meeting for the joint appointment. And then we have one grave site, Cemetery D, from Margaret Smith, we can prove that by unanimous consent. And I was asking if any of the city council members had anything to read before the council this evening? I know we have a, Monday.
Yes, I've kind of stepped aside, but the younger generation of discerners take that, but yeah, it's gonna be new, it doesn't say months. Small understanding.
For not large. You might have anything else to bring before council this evening?
Let me have a quick, Mayor. Sorry, I had to make a list. The, there's a group, and I mean, that's been working on a recovery ready community certification. We have finished our paperwork, we just need a few more things for the mayor and the judge to review those for us. Once we submit that, and before approval, they actually do a site visit to certify us, so it's a very intense process, but it's been very rewarding because we know where we need services that we don't already have covered in our community. The dark hand dispensing machine that was put in in mid-November through just last Friday, I believe, thirty-two of those boxes have been removed from that, and the county sheriff and the pastor at the church reports they've not had any issues at all with any problems, so that's been great. And then I've talked before about Brian Hubbard, who was chair of the Kentucky Old Vehicle Debate Committee, the change in the attorney general, a gentleman by the name of Christopher Evans has taken him under that, and he's a former DEA agent, so I think that's a good move for the Old Vehicle Debate Committee, so gonna try to get him down here to speak to an healthcare meeting. And then Bethany Haven is working on a plan for a white flag operation if we get into extreme cold and things like that, so last year, we had to put one together on Christmas Eve, Eve, I think Joe Pruitt had to, because of the weather, so.
I had it Monday or Tuesday. The wind breeze on Tuesday was nice, it was a little windy.
I don't know how far along they are in their process, but it is something that they've been writing guidelines for, and going by National Weather Service and things like that, so I think they're gonna send it to you once they get, like, a few years from now.
County's been doing about using the civic center, and it's been needed.
That's, that's, thank you.
Running a little bit behind, I'm sorry.
I'm off the bed. I'm in the under.
But we did get through that historic guidelines stuff, and my plan tonight, and the way to do it, is I want, told you last meeting, I want to give you all some things that are coming down the road from different, some of the big picture items that we'll be dealing with this coming year. Some of us have been budgeting, last budget, but some of the things, in our police department, one thing we have major need for is more space, we've been already looking, and we've been talking to Judge Hush about some possibilities, working, the sheriff's department needs more space, dispatch needs more space, Barstown PD needs more space, Dustin County Rescue Fire and Rescue needs more space, so all of those agencies are located in that one little small, two little small buildings, so that's something we're gonna be working on with our police department, is either trying to find a building we can buy and renovate like we did with the fire department, in a, in a good location, and/or build a new fire department, so I think this year, we'll be looking at locations, and we're probably with our budget in July, probably appropriate some money for design, assuming we find something, and we may hear more from the judge, with some of his plans may impact some of our plans, so Chief, you want to maybe add a couple of things while you feel like it would be, I know our staff has grown considerably in the last seven or eight years.
Yes, sir, so the lease was signed when they moved into the building that we're currently in, it was signed eighteen years ago in two thousand and six, and the staffing has increased by about sixty-four percent, and so right now, we are just, just, the, the space is just so critical. We have detectives that we have taken an interview room and turned that into an office, we have someone in a closet that we've tried to enter an office, we had a holding cell that we've turned into an office, so we have utilized every single square footage in that building, but we are just really busting at the seams, and as we move forward, we really would like to be strategically located somewhere in the downtown area, just for, just to continue for that safety for the community, the visitors to be visible in a, in a good location, so it's something that we've needed for several years, but just, it's kind of at a good point now that it's, it's becoming, we have no more space left, so we really would be appreciative to just get that discussion started and, and get that next step moving in that direction.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Any questions? Like I said, Judge Hush came on, we've been having conversations with him and Brad on, they've got a lot of needs, you know, facilities, so we're talking with them as well. Might collaborate, we might not be able to collaborate. Seems like they've got some ability, but it seems like it keeps evolving as to what they might need it more for. And one time, we were talking about putting the sheriff's department and the police in that building. And now it seems like it's evolving into some other things. But we'll work on this. The recreation department, Joe and Rick might remember this, and Bill Shekels played nothing very convenient ball in that baseball field. But with St. Joe Prep here, there was a swimming pool on the far west side and a gymnasium. And then they took that out. And there was a sidewalk that comes down the backside of that building that takes you downstairs. Used to be part of the locker room was downstairs, and there's a sidewalk touching those steps. And that has been causing water problems to come in. It was, it was built probably back in the early seventies when that pool went out here. So it's been giving us trouble. And we just re-did the flooring here in the last year and a half, causes some water problems. So that's a major project, project we're going to address in the recreation department, fix that. There are little ways we're going to do that. Their fifth quarter and their pickleball leagues and volleyball leagues have grown so much. They have a lot of equipment that has to be put out on the floors and taken down for the different leagues that come and go. So they're going to, we're going to build an addition on to the west side of the recreation department where there'll be storage available for all this equipment that they, now there's a lot of it sits out literally on the floor area. And that'll also take care of this water problem that's we're having on the floor in the rec center. So that's one of the main projects with their coming up. Community Park Playground is not finished because we've been in such a drought that the final surface that goes around all that new equipment, it was never kind of moist enough for the rest to get the compaction right to finish it. So we hope that's going to help us now that the temperature's at seventy-five degrees or higher in the new installation. Right, we're doing more work on Woods and Rogers Park this year. A new pavilion down there. So that's kind of goes to the bridge department and our engineering department. We've got ready to start our upgrades to our Town Creek Waste Treatment Plant down on Milky Run Road. That's a twenty-one to twenty-two million dollar improvement to that plant, plus an engineering. It'll be probably an oversight and construction project. That'll be a two-year project that we're going to start February and March, I think, is that correct?
Yes.
So that's the main projects with our water and sewer infrastructure and our utilities. And then the East Barstown Water Line, which will start basically at Courthouse and go east towards Walmart. And that'll also include a new water tank, one point two-five million tank. Could be coming right behind Parkway Baptist Church there as you drive by Parkway Drive. That's a ten million dollar upgrade to our water distribution system in the east zone. It's being done for a couple of reasons. Number one, they're going to be letting that new road from Parkway Drive all the way to Fredericksburg here probably this next year. So that'll create a lot of new development out that corridor. And so the east zone would help service that corridor. And also the industrial park, which is the distilleries that are out in that area, not just the industrial park, not just Barstown Bourbon, but Lux Row and some of those other distilleries that need a lot of that. New tank and new line will help provide water for those needs that are on us now. So that'll be starting later this year, that east zone project. That's about a ten million dollar water project. And then the Louisville Water Company project, you know, that's the new line that'll be coming from basically Beam Distillery all the way to Barstown and be a combination project with us and North Nelson Water District. Louisville Water, and of course, the good news about that project is that was getting funded with a fifteen million dollar grant. We got through the CARES Act funding, the state god, I think it was CARES Act funding. I'm not sure that's going to cover it all, but it's covering a whole lot of it. But Louisville Water Company has already got their design, their permitting, and I think their easements handled. So they actually started some clearing there. It starts about at the old interest of Beam, Happy Hollow Road. That's the original interest of Beam. That's where it's going to start. And then they will join North Nelson with.
Four Roses.
Four Roses, yeah. And then they have to get it all the way to basically Barstown, which is about close to about across the word. Home and dinner hall, that's where they'll bring it to us. So that whole project, I think we're thinking it's going to be somewhere closer to eighteen to twenty million. So North Nelson and Barstown will have to cover the difference there. And North Nelson has a pretty long stretch of line to build with, with these funds. I mean, that's going to help them pay for that section for them to get it to Barstown. They're probably going to be starting later this year. They still got to retain, obtain some right of ways, security easements. Theirs is a lot more difficult because they've got a lot more priorities, but they've got to get where their lines going versus. Louisville Water Company already had major easement, worked out at Burnheim, which is good that they did because Burnheim is kind of hard to deal with sometimes. Infrastructure. And then the Louisville Water Project, getting it all the way from start out there by Happy Hollow Road to us is about, we think a two-year project. North Nelson, like theirs will take about a year. But the whole thing, it's a twenty-four inch line, it's a huge line. That's going to bring nine more million gallons of water a day to pass to us once it's built. So that'll, the city will have access to five million of that, correct?
Nine, five max.
Yeah. So that is more than we sell today on average. So that will be a major new infrastructure improvement for us to give us ample water for the next twenty, thirty-five years, even with the growth of the distilleries, increasing our capacity about five million a day. And then the fire department, Chief, I would like you to talk about the difference. You're going to bring your EMT, except for B certification to A, that's your own field, which you want to talk about in a second.
Yes, sir. So right now, we're, we're certified at the basic healthcare level. We provide BLS service. So we're kind of limited in our scope of practice and what we can do. We can only like provide oxygen, you know, Narcan, glucose, just small amounts of medications. But if we can get moved up to ALS service, we'll be able to provide like IVs with pain medication. Be able to give D-50, which is like for diabetes and things like that. So really increase our level of care to the, the patients in Barstown. And it's, it's going to be quite an undertaking, but the staff's pretty excited about it because they want to increase the level of care that we can give to the patients. And we recently hired a paramedic who's also an instructor. So he should be able to come in and instruct our crews. And he'll be able to come in like for each shift instead of, like with our confined space class, we had to bring in all the staff for that one class, which costs the city like almost three hundred and fifty hours of overtime. So if we can just bring one person in to teach each shift, it'll save us quite a bit in overtime. But I think it'd be really good for the, the community. It's with the way EMS is going and they're, they're having problems getting staff. And it's, it's a problem all around the country on the EMS side. So we're kind of just want to take a more control of Barstown and be able to provide that ALS level care to where we can make a better difference. I mean, we've made a huge difference in the last eight years just providing BLS care. But when we start providing ALS care, we'll be able to really increase our level of service. So we'll work on that for the whole next year and hopefully we can start our training in January.
And then in our cemetery, we don't think about cemetery much until you need grave sites. And we're going to take the space where the old water tank and Henrytown Home Moon Fence was located under it for many years and sandlot and all. We're going to have that re-mapped and create several more cemetery lots in that area. That covers a bigger space than you think when you get to it, where the legs of the tank used to be and then the fence around it. So David Evans is our GPS expert, GIS expert at the city. He's going to map it and work with the cemetery committee on developing those lots. I can get several lots to offer for individuals and families to purchase multiple. You know, we don't have a lot of space now where you can go in and buy multiple lots side by side anymore. So that'll help in that manner. So we're happy to do that. That won't be a very expensive undertaking. Having the staff also be able to do that mapping is a big help. That's all I have on, we've got some more things coming, but I'll, I'll share those with you later on, yes.
Have you, have we done any more research with our planning committee on the indoor sports conference? Or is that going to be on the other?
Yes, we just got, got finished with the design and rendering. Now we've got to figure out how to pay for it. It's hard to go out and say, well, you know, it's, it's going to have a price tag of probably thirty-four and thirty-six million dollars. And that's cutting out some things that a lot of people want. But, you know, we've got to figure out how to pay for it. The city's got money we can put into it, and we hope that the local command will step up. Then we're going to figure out how we can balance. So I just, I just got some of those renderings literally today. So Kim Houston and I are on the meeting, we'll out and meet people and try to raise some money. You know, we want to raise, you know, five to seven million if we can on some main opportunities for the facility. So we're meeting on that with our consultant, Pedestal Sports, who's done this all in the country. They, they, they work with the fundraising side of things. And we're working with our architect, Lucky and Paulie. They know about grant opportunities since they do, they know these kind of facilities all over the state. They're working with their people on some grant opportunities for the facility, so.
So that's on.
Oh, yeah. We're hoping that, we're hoping if we figure out how to pay for it, we'll break ground this year.
The design is almost finished.
But I'm not ready to announce it because we had raised the first nickel that the city's going to put into it. That's the one thing that separates us, you know, when people talk about, well, Shepherdsville's going to build a huge indoor sports center and aquatic center. Well, Shepherdsville's general fund has twelve million dollars a year more coming into just an occupational tax immediately. That doesn't count the fact that they also had to issue a premium tax. And every city that I know of, Barstown, has an insurance premium tax. Of course, Lemon and Springfield, E-Town, Dambler, Berea, Hodginsville, Harrisburg, you name it, they all have an insurance premium tax. We've never had one. I'm not advocating that we go that direction. But there may have to be some tax increases in order to pay off the debt that will become this type of facility. But it is badly needed and it's going to have, it's going to serve the youth of our and adults of our community in a much better way than we've ever been served. And I think you all will be very satisfied with what we are including that structure. A lot of other communities our size have them, but they have a much higher. Shepherdsville's only a thousand people more than Barstown. Their budget for other things like police, fire, streets, recreation, stuff is about the same as ours. So they've got a windfall. I talked to the mayor over there. He says, I could write a check for two million dollars a year and pay this off out of my occupational tax. I got twelve million a year that I don't spend it off. We're just not in that spot. So we've got to be more innovative on how we fund. Said it's about eighty thousand square foot building, so it's a huge facility. Four, four more to do, empty, used courts, indoor walking trail, indoor aquatic center, meeting rooms. It's, it's what we did for a long time, so. And I'm not ready to say it's coming until I figure out how I'm going to pay for it. So Kim and I got some work to do in the next few months to see how much we can get these naming opportunities. That'll help us reduce our, get some, it's not a lot. Stay tuned. I probably said more than I wanted to on that, but checking, all right.
Will you be part of that too, Jim? Don't know.
I do know, not much right now. And it wasn't, and that has a chance with the new administration taking it. I'm not giving up. They're going to be part of this conversation, but they're not talking much. So disappointing because this thing's going to serve more people in the county than we'll consider.
Right.
But maybe they're going to, the judge and I haven't said, we haven't, we haven't said it ain't going to happen. But he's got some ideas. Hopefully we get something there. Okay, we'll catch the second half, maybe.
DVR is a wonderful thing. Skip commercials.
I didn't, I didn't think. But that's all I've got. If you all would like to, I need most of the report to jump in, please. All the favors, yeah?
Aye.